So at this time, I'm going to call the board meeting to session. It is October 1st, oh my gosh, 2019. It's gone by very fast, I think. And it is 6 o'clock. And I have two lovely ladies here, Riley and MJ from Eagle River High School, who are going to be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. And if we could have our opening statement, please, from our representative student. Does she do hers first? Oh, okay. So I'll go first, and then we'll let our student rep go. So, of course, we'd like to take this moment to recognize and the fact that we are very honored that we are residing on traditional Dinana land. We want to be thankful for that. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and the Board. The mission of Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. And now, I'd like to turn it over to our student representative for her opening statement.
On behalf of the school board, we would like to thank students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune in to the Anchorage School District YouTube channel to watch the live stream. Recordings of the meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Okay. And at this time, we'd have approval of agenda. Is there any changes or any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, then the agenda will stand as is. The next thing we have, probably our most rewarding and fun thing for the evening, is our focus on staff, students, and community who make ASD great. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. And if you haven't been to this portion of a board meeting, it was about three years ago that the Board made a specific deliberate decision to celebrate all those people in our community who make ASD great. And that would be, of course, our students, our parents, and our staff. Yep. So with that, I would like to invite Campbell Elementary Principal, Michelle Johansson, Johansson, and Candy Jo Bracken. I don't know if, I didn't see Candy Jo. Oh, there she is. All right. Because I know Candy Jo. She was last year's PDA president, and then Tiffany Tolleson, this year's president. Is Tiffany present? All right, please come. She's not only president, but she's present. So please come forward, as well as the Mears Middle School Principal, Eric Backman, and then April Idy, who is the president this year, Jocelyn Smith, our secretary, Fadwala Ideas, who is the treasurer, as well as Lisa Jackson, who's the second vice president. So Mears, please come forward as well. So we'll have one school on one side and one on the other. Come on up. So, right in front of everyone. Okay, so we are pleased to announce that Campbell Elementary School PTA, on my left, as well as Mears Middle School, PTSA, have been honored as National PTS, PTA Schools of Excellence, a distinction that spans two years. The National PTA School of Excellence is a recognition program that supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools to enrich the educational experiences and overall well-being for students. The process for building successful partnerships starts with the national standards for family-school partnerships and consists of these three steps: raising awareness about the power of family and community involvement; taking action to cultivate involvement through specific programs and practices; and then finally, celebrating success as schools see increased involvements in its impact. Honorees receive celebration tools, automatic consideration for the Phoebe Aperson Hurst Award, and a $2,000 grant for their school. Thank you, Mears and Campbell, for empowering families and advocating for all children at your schools. Your strong partnership is valued and appreciated. Congratulations, and you make ASD great. So, one of the things we like to do is at, focus on staff and students, is that we pass the mic. And we would love for you, and we do this with our very young five-year-olds, as well as anyone of any age, and we just want to give you the mic to have the opportunity to share. It could be about your school, about your experience, about this award, anything. And so actually, I usually ask kids what they like best about school. And so we like to find out all that good stuff. But you have the mic, and please participate about this award or anything else. If you don't have anything to say, that's okay. But since I read all your names together, if you want to just reintroduce yourself as well. So with that, I'll start with Campbell.
Well, thank you. I'm Michelle Johansson. This is Candy Jo Bracken, Tiffany Tolleson, and Rebecca. And they're on our pass board in our new board. And I just want to say that we've been really, really thankful to have wonderful parents who are getting involved in our STEM school. They've really embraced the fact that we have a new, you know, the STEM school in Anchorage, and helping us to get the kind of equipment that we need and everything, and just helping us with all of those events that we need to have to really showcase our school. So thank you so much to all of you guys.
Just want to say real quick, I've been with Campbell for seven years and graduated out last year. But Campbell Elementary was, is the best elementary school that our kids could have gone to, and we've actually held this award for six years, so.
Congratulations. Others? They just want to pass the mic on over to you, Eric, so they've passed it.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Bishop. And some acknowledgement for all the members of the Board. Thanks for this opportunity. It's great. And for Jo, Zwadney, my supervisor, who created this opportunity for us. Anyway, April, Lisa, Jocelyn, and Fadwa, these are incredible partners to me and share in the leadership of the school. I'll just share with you one of many things. But right now, April and I are looking at applications for grants totaling about $36,000 that are coming from our teachers. And PTSA will fund the vast majority of it, and I'll be able to fund the rest. So this is the kind of partnership generosity and commitment that these parents exhibit on a daily basis. And they help make my job both enjoyable and much easier.
I have tried, or tried for this opportunity to get this School of Excellence for the past three years. So it's exciting that this is my last year at Mears Middle School to finally have achieved this, you know, as I'm heading out at the end of the year. And this is also my current board. So we got to move on from last year to this year and continue doing what we did last year.
Everybody a thumbs up. So ladies and gentlemen, these people make ASD. Everybody with me? Great. All right. So we'll do each school and then both together. I'm. We're going to do each school separately and then together, if that's okay. All right, let's do one together, and then we'll do yours separately. Join us. Do you want to come down here and then I'll put there since you're. We'll share these pictures with you. And then Campbell, can we do the banner? And the banner looks great. That was good. Good energy, Scott. Good energy. That was so nice. I saw your post. I say, I'll watch them, but. Okay. I was going to send a military report. Okay, we're all back. What are we missing? Dina? Okay, we're going to move on to reports. We do not have a military person here this evening. So we're going to move on to our Student Advisory Board. And I think you guys haven't had a meeting yet, right, this week?
No, our meeting is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, so our meeting is next Tuesday, and that's when we'll have our election. So this could be my last meeting. I'm not sure. There's a strong possibility I could be back next meeting, but.
Are we that scary? Okay, well, we would love to have you back either way. So if you're here, we'll be happy to see if we'll be welcoming a new representative. Thank you. And at this time, do we have anything from our communications?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We, the Communications Committee met on September 24th. Our next meeting will be on October 8th, from 3:00 to 4:00 in the boardroom. Yes, conference room. Thank you.
And was there anything in your meeting you'd like to share with us?
Oh, sure. A couple of things. We talked about the AASB resolutions. We looked over the strategic planning phases that. We don't have the dates yet for all of the public input, but we did look at the phases. And Mr. Brown gave us lots of information and tips about how to tell our story, the ASD story. And that was, those were pretty much the major items that we discussed.
Thank you. Mr. Holloman?
Yes, governance met last Tuesday. And on the sheet that you got, there's a list of things that we covered. Probably the most notable would be a resolution on the census that'll come to the Board in our next meeting under, as to be read in, and then the following meeting to be voted on. Rest of it was pretty much language in our board policy and regulations. I don't think anything too controversial about that, and they're too numerous and trivial to mention in detail.
All right. Finance?
Finance has not met since the last meeting. We look forward to getting back together on October 15th.
Okay, and I will give the report on our Strategic Planning Steering Committee. We met on 9/27. The expectations of the group and the process were reviewed. We had discussion on current vision and goals. Desired student outcomes and qualities were discussed. Questions for the survey are being compiled and reviewed. And the Steering Committee is helping guide and shape the community outreach. So one of our next steps will be identifying our facilitators and training them to help us go out into the community to get the input and conversations from community members so that we can bring that in and compile the data. Okay, any other? Yes, Ms. Hildy?
The report for the Aquarian Ad-Hoc Committee. So we're still in the preliminary stages, but they're working on organizing who their committee members will be. We have a tentative date set for October 22nd. I haven't heard confirmation whether that will work for their APC. And if not, it would have to be a week earlier, just based on people's schedules in our timeline. The administration's prepared a kind of full spectrum of possibilities that the board members and the committee have been able to review and have been sent to the APC president, and then they'll be able to review with their. APC will come together. And then after we meet, we'll have another meeting in early to mid-November where we'll finalize, after they've had a chance to go back to their community and talk about what we discussed. And then we should be on time with the December 3 recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all my committee chairs and your presentations tonight. At this time, before we start our public testimony, I'll read the statement. "Board Members Welcome Public Comment on Non-Agenda and Non-Action Items. We value public comment as an ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns and informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of our meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or can be submitted in writing. We have a table up front and center with microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You have three minutes to testify. You may begin speaking when the timer appears on the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the Board asks that there be no clapping after testimony as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." And at this time, we have Annie Massey signed up. Either one, Annie. This one, the mic's on, though, so you might want to.
I'm really nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Never done this. Longtime parent, first-time board meeting. So I'm bringing this up with me, and I can't get to all of it. This is a year's worth of work. I'm a parent of three children in the Anchorage School District. And we have been at a school for, this is our third year at that school, four years in Anchorage School District. I'm here to give testimony about my experience with board policy, BP 5040, nutrition specifically. And I am aware that board policy regarding nutrition was written in 2006, approved in 2006. So that was 13 years ago. And I want to make certain that you understand it's been 13 years that we've had board policy about nutrition. And today, this takes me a minute and 16 seconds to read. It's the only thing I've timed. And I want to make sure you hear it, because it's really important. I have three kids, and they hop in the car. And almost every single day, they hop in and tell me that they've had sugar that day that's been handed to them directly from teachers, directly from staff, directly from volunteers, directly from substitutes, and parents. And I put that responsibility on teachers and staff and principals because they're allowing it into the classroom. And I'm shaking like a leaf. So I'm going to go ahead and read this. This is the list. This half of the list is all given by teachers. This half of the list is just birthdays. So over the year, my, I had my kids brainstorm with me, and we wrote this all down. And this isn't everything that they remembered. Pink and blue frosting celebration cookies after testing. Haichu given when my teachers forgot my names. Every time they forgot names, and this was a substitute teacher, they got a haichu. Told for throat digestion, candy canes, chips, health class, in health class, Tootsie Rolls, candy canes, chips, National Popcorn Day, ice cream party, birth box for top, for collecting box tops, carrots, Smarties, oranges, Smarties at health class, Smarties for winning an art project, kisses for work in ignite, two mints for math testing. We were told if we brought back homework by a certain time, we'd get a whole candy bar. A whole candy bar. Candy canes in the paw jar, Hershey's Bar for completing. And my child couldn't remember what it was for, but he did remember the whole bar. He was going to get the whole bar. Tootsie Pops for art class, Dum Dums, bag of Skittles. And I always ask them, why? Why were you given this? And I get answers that say, anywhere from, we were told if we bring our homework back by a certain time, we would receive a bag of Skittles. If we, you did so well on maps testing, you did so well on PEAKS testing, you've been working so hard, here's some candy. And this is what's been given at school during school hours. All of this is during school hours. And that's important to know if you read your board policy. In my own kid, in my kids' own words, birthday gummy worm, chocolate cupcakes, birthday ice cream cake with gummy worms, birthday mini cupcakes, birthday half a donut, birthday Rice Krispie treats, birthday chocolate donuts, birthday maple donuts, birthday sprinkle donuts, and for one birthday, two in one day, both a cupcake and a cookie.
And I'm sorry if I could get you to wrap up.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah. Three minutes is not enough for a year's worth of work. But I wanted you to hear it. It's really important. And everything that I'm saying, please read your board policy. Every single thing in there is not being followed at our school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on a non-action or non-agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move forward with the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. Hassan's here, sitting in. So this is our first rendition here of, he controls what I say next. Did you know that, Hassan? You probably didn't know that. Do you want me to repeat something? Just do it again. Thank you, school board, and just appreciate the opportunity for an update. The first thing, I don't have a report on this, but this was placed directly on there to help me remember that the fiscal year 2020 CIP list that is sent to. You could go back to the other one, just so I remember. That is sent, well, we have a CIP list, which is going to match our bond, because we're keeping those tightly knit now. We're going to come to the Board for non-action next week. And this is just an ask the Board how you would like to receive the information and have the discussion time. A couple of possibilities are, that was discussed this summer, possibly a separate work session that's specific only to this topic. Or during the non-action, on the same night, if we can't come another night, it would be pooled, and the 45 minutes or whatever times needed to discuss, that's usually the time we have per item, can occur right on the next board, meaning during the non-action items. But we wanted the Board to feel like they had some self-determination and when they wanted to have the discussion around understanding more in regard to the presentation. In addition to that, individual board members are welcome to get the information that is going to be finished up and prepared by the administration in our recommendation to the Board. You're welcome to have that individually, in small groups, similar to how we do the budget. So in knowing that this is a big decision, we want the Board to be prepared. And so if feedback could be provided to, for planning, back to the Board President, the Board President can notify me how you'd like it, we are able and willing to take care of that, however. So that's the first thing, and I wanted to get into it before I forgot. But then staffing echoing good things will remain. So with the bond discussion, that information, I just want to kind of put it in your camp and let us know how you'd like. Because this is a difference of our scheduled process. And it's new this year. So we want to be sure that those items are pooled, if we want them pooled. Okay? And with that, all it is, is a recommendation to us. Okay? And then next. There was a question, and several, that I've been sharing over time in regard to class sizes and the difference of prior years to this year. And it continues to come up in community councils and continues to come up from questions from me. So I just assumed that the Board probably had broader questions as well as according to class sizes and what's happening at different schools. And there've been some direct questions in regard to, is it the immersion program at this school that's causing the neighborhood side to be overcrowded? Or is it, this is just different for our group, and our school must be overcrowded? And so I wanted to share, really, the policy that occurs at the budget level, at the policy level at the Board, and then how that process looks at a school. So that when you're charged in the middle of getting asked a question in front of an audience, that the understanding of the actualization of this at the school level, you just have an idea of what it looks like. So in the budget, proposed budget book, this is the mini book, but also in the large book, you'll remember on page eight in this, the book, this has the approved, board-approved PTR. And over the last two years, the pupil-teacher ratio did not change for our grade-level groupings. That was priority for the Board, that we did not increase class sizes. And so we placed funding in the same manner that we did the year before. So FY '19, as well as this year, FY '20 are very similar. Actually, they're about the exact same. So in kindergarten, we're going to fund, for every 21 kids, we'll fund another teacher for 22. And so those are guides. They're not class caps at all, nor are they. It's, it's, they're not class sizes. They are ratios for additional staffing. It's a staffing mechanism for the budget. So when you hear PTR, it's really a function, it's an algorithm, a function. It's not really determined of the class size. But then you wonder, well, how do you then determine the class size? And I'm going to go to the next slide to share some detail on the actual class list. And this is cut and pasted from planning in elementary, as well as in our budget department. So there was a question about Kincaid. And the question came in at third grade that said, our school is overcrowded. We have too many kids. Where are the teachers? And we shared that this year, we didn't have any hold-back teachers. I generally have a fund that I'm able to hold back, but we expended it through expenses over the summer. Some of those were teachers in classrooms that we prior approved. Others were other expenses approved by the Board. So that's where those funds went. So we, this year, if we needed to make any adjustments, Dan and his team and Kirsten and her team made those adjustments from school to school. So schools literally two weeks before were notified, ah, you didn't, you came in, you know, 40 kids under enrollment. We're going to move this teacher over here, because they're all over. And most of those occurred within. And most of those occurred within, uh, a week to ten days. There were two that literally happened the day before school started. And so, uh, we're, we're working with those teachers, um, in a better process for doing that and processing through. But, um, we had the adjustments made. But in, in here, you notice that some classes, uh, the, this school was given, um, staffing according to the numbers that are in each grade level, but then the staffing is just assigned to the school. And then at the school level, they're determining, what do I want to do with the staffing levels? Do we want combo classes, or maybe we just want to have some higher, some lower? If you noticed in sixth grade, they have one class that's over. But if you notice in third grade, every class is over. Now, they had the ability to say, well, do we maybe want to make a combo class and keep everybody at that number or lower? But sometimes combination classes are more difficult. The decisions are really made at the building level and, uh, much of it has to do, really, with, uh, competencies of our staff, the experiences of our staff. Have they done combos? Do they like combos? Will that work with the PE schedule? Uh, also, sometimes there's just, uh, children that would, you would want the class size to be smaller. You wouldn't really want to put, uh, certain kids together in the same class. And you'll, you'll might even find where some classes have twenty-six and others are down at twenty-one. And they're specifically determined, they're making these decisions at the building level for a reason. And so, um, yes, third grade at Kincaid is over the staffing ratio. The school as a whole is not. But those are decisions made at the school level according to where they are. So the next school was, the question came in from a community council about Sand Lake. And this is interesting because generally there's four classes per year. But some years, what we call them, uh, for lack of a better term, we call them bubbles, that there's a bubble in a year, which means like the class size is just bigger for that year, um, for some reason. And, and we actually have, uh, grade levels that are bigger than other grade levels. You know, we always look at the cohort leaving us according to the cohort coming in. And if you notice at Sand Lake, they actually have five kindergarten teachers. And they made a choice to have five kindergarten teachers. If they didn't have five kindergarten teachers, every classroom, three of the classrooms would have twenty-one and one classroom would have twenty-two. But they made a choice to have fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, eighteen, and eighteen. Now, opposite of that then, if you look way down in sixth grade, they have some classes that are actually combo classes. I want you to know that that nineteen and the twelve are combined in a five-six. They actually have, uh, another combo class in other grade levels. And they have, um, the nine and the fourteen are combo classes in first and second grade. So I took the teachers' names off in our database. We have teachers' names and everything, but we just didn't, you know, want to put those there. So, um, decisions are made, combo classes are made, but it's really to say, what do we want at school? How do we look at our student population? What's the best way to organize them? I, in a perfect world, we would have staff standing by, ready to make every class size lower. That isn't the reality today, nor, and I'm just maybe laying the groundwork for as we move into the future, if, um, our revenue and expenses become very tightly knit, uh, to where there isn't additional funding, these decisions are going to become harder and harder. And, but they're different than we used to make. We literally took a different stance because we had no additional people this year. So, um, I just want to share with you the, the, the change in practice that might help in, in moving forward and explaining to folks in regard to how classroom sizes are, are created. There are some kids in large class sizes at schools and then some will benefit for very small. Um, and sometimes it's within the same school, like you saw Kincaid. All of them were just about under except for one grade level. But it was a choice. Um, what we do then, at that grade level at Kincaid and others, uh, Dan has assigned, uh, teacher assistants for two hours a day to help with just the facilitating of the paperwork and movement of kids sometimes. So the, the teacher would have additional, um, staff time, uh, to just help with the work involved in having lots of kids. Um, again, it's not, um, a perfect solution. Keeping our, all our class sizes at, um, you know, the, the recommended quality level from, um, you know, established through research would be great, but that's not a reality. So I wanted to spend a little extra time and be able to answer any of your questions so that when you're, when you're out in these, because they came up in two different, um, community sessions. And so I, I wanted to share that since it was so different. But that's how, how it's done. Um, moving on, I just want to share really great news about, um, the Echo, uh, network. I am proud that, and just a little bit of review in that, uh, two, last, year before last, Mark Stock and I wrote a grant to the state of Alaska for some, uh, PD monies, and it came back at, uh, six hundred thousand dollars. And it was really great because all we asked for was th, three hundred thousand, and they doubled it because they liked the idea. And the Echo project and the Echo, Echo Network is a partnership with UAA because UAA already had the license for Echo. And they use it in the health field. And it's really a networking tool to get best practices of professionals together. And, uh, Mark, Dr. Stock's prior, uh, work at another university, they started using the Medical Echo Network to also share education. And so he brought that here and an idea, uh, to start the Echo Network when we found out that UAA had a license. And they're letting us, uh, use their license and piggyback on it. So, uh, we went out and Carrie Gray is the director of that program, and she's here in the audience. Um, she prefers not to speak unless a question's asked. But, um, many, many partners to move along professional development of teachers, of board, any professional, anyone really in the state that wants to join, it's open. It's like a MOOC, which is the, the, you know, mass open network. Uh, what is it? MOOC stands for it. Mass, Open, Online, uh, with a K, something. So, uh, a MOOC is, uh, mass, open, online, content, maybe? A C? Maybe it's a C. All right. So, I just want to share, um, it has been very, very successful due to its partnership and collaboration. And so statewide, the Alaska Education Network is focused on uniting Alaska's educators with the intention of building a support network to reduce isolation while strengthening the link between leadership and student achievement. Uh, not to be, uh, political, but more important right now in education is our state is to bring educators together, uh, to build support and learn from each other. And as always, it, as money might be tight, um, you know, we just want to have a system that we can rely on to move us forward in an efficient way that uses innovation to do this. We don't always need to actually be in the same room to be face-to-face. And as you can see, Jim Anderson has been on here, Michael Webb, uh, people from around the district as well. Um, we're not trying to replace any professional development, uh, but we're staying, uh, connected, uh, in doing so. So in a nutshell, uh, it's a seventy-five-minute session via Zoom at no cost to districts. So our, uh, grant pays for all other districts if they'd like. It saves travel time and the project gives you opportunity to offer something back to your district and schools. And so we share this about, um, being a professional has the responsibility of sharing your knowledge with someone else. So it's not always in our profession about what you're going to get from your professional development. The idea about this is what are you going to give for professional development? And the target audience is literally anyone around the state. Right now, we have, um, in three months, we've achieved forty-one professional development hours, thirty-five Echo sessions, two-hundred-and-fifty participants, and that many travel dollars saved because we could meet. We have five, uh, different network strands or themes, and they're all recorded. And you are welcome at any time to join as well. Um, the, uh, sessions will be offered in October with three strands. On the next slide is educational leadership, instructional development, and positive behavior supports and well-being. We're partnering with, um, this dyslexia group in our state and others to do a reading one around the state. So we're offering them to come in and be the experts. So it's literally our everyday people who are doing the work, becoming the experts to share their knowledge. Uh, we do have target populations. However, the Alaska Education Network does not restrict participation to an employee, to a district, to a person. Children may, uh, enter. You can attend any session on one network or many sessions in more than one network. And so it's free, it's open, it's grant-funded, and, um, great benefits, and we're just happy to be able to offer it. Uh, the professionals, uh, in our district are literally reaching out to others who don't have the capacity to do this. In addition, um, our IT staff assists other districts electronically in setting up Zoom and, and working through their, uh, IT issues. So we're, not only is it the programming, but it's the back support that we offer in kind as well. So that's good news. Wanted you to know if you hear about Echo Network at the School Board Association, anything, um, I want you to be proud that it's your folks here, um, supporting the state in that effort. And think of principals, starting today. October is National Principals Month. And in light, uh, the board, uh, Vice President, President asked me to share a little bit about what we do for National, um, Principals Month. Of course, PTAs in schools, uh, celebrate that locally. But as a district, we will send, um, a, a book actually, and, uh, a nice gift card from the board and administration to our principals for our study sessions. So we send out a, a nice note to them from you, uh, and administration. We also, uh, this year, I think, have, uh, an ASD, Principals Are Great mug or something like that. So they'll get a little gift as well. And so, uh, lots will be going on, but as you go out to your schools this month, let, uh, principals know it's, you know, National Principals Month. It's also National Bus Safety Week coming up. And, um, held during the third full week of October each year, the National School Bus Safety is an active and evolving public education program and an excellent way for parents, students, teachers, motorists, school bus operators, school administrators, and other interested parties to join forces and address the importance of school bus safety. Designed to prom, promote school bus safety, um, school districts throughout the country observe this School Bus Safety Week. And it will be this year, October twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, and the theme is My School Bus, The Safest Form of Student Transportation. And just so you know, that the theme of the National School Bus Safety Week is actually derived from a poster contest held the year before. And the winner this year was an eighth-grade student from Belton, Texas. Uh, Belton ISD, actually, in Temple, Texas. Uh, as a side note, um, Matt Teeford's alma mater, Temple High School, is in Belton. He doesn't like to claim that every now and then, but I know it. And, um, a young gal named Shivangi was the eighth-grade winner, um, in the national competition. And so this was her artwork and celebrated this year. All right. And really good news, ASD has two of the three schools that are honored this year by our Commissioner of Education, uh, the U.S. Department of Education, Aurora Elementary, and O'Malley. The Secretary of Education, rather, Betsy DeVos, recognized three-hundred-sixty-two schools across the nation as Blue Ribbon Schools based on their overall academic excellence and progress in closing achievement gaps among student groups. These schools demonstrate that all students can achieve to high levels. And again, of the schools approved in Alaska, two of them are right here at home in ASD. And one more good news story. Esports is here, and it is an ASA event now. So ASA has, um, uh, I guess, taken over the, uh, organizational structure of esports, and it will become a club sport, and then students can letter in esports, believe it or not. So, um, the philosophy on, uh, esports, high school-based sports, and is a focus on participation, which is perfectly aligned with the National Federation of High School. The commission and the, and outlined the National Federation of High Schools and sports and activities. This is now a new one, rather. It's, uh, member associates and CEO Mark Kosky, uh, shared that he was excited to enter, um, esports into the National Federation, which then ASA is a part of locally, the National Federation. Um, just to let you know that, uh, kids now, um, their grades will be checked. They have to be in attendance to participate. We had esports before, but it was an activity. And so, um, it was just, um, slightly organized clubs, but we didn't check for attendance, didn't check for school organization. Now they'll actually be playing for Diamond High or playing for Benny Benson. Uh, they'll have teams, uh, we will support their structure. They'll have coaches, they'll have guidance. And so it'll be motivated through those other, um, uh, sports that we have. And, and students will be recognized in their school as, um, esports athletes. And, um, just so you know, nearly two hundred colleges now in the United States and Canada are actively recruiting and offering scholarships for esports. Correct. They're giving away their money for esports. So we were happy to, uh, that ASA did this. We're happy to bring it aboard. And I believe we have a fifty-thousand-dollar donation from a local vendor that, uh, is going to, um, go to our schools to provide some hardware, and maybe some jerseys and things for the kids. So we did have a local sponsor give us some money for that. With that, board, lots of good things happening, lots of fun around here, and, uh, thank you.
Is there any board questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you for the information on the, uh, Project Echo. So as a board member, I would like to recommend for other board members to check out the topics. I've signed up for about six of them. Uh, and, um, in my role as, uh, as an adjunct at, uh, UAA, I had a conversation with Dr., um, Stock regarding whether the, the, this program would be beneficial for them as well. And he said absolutely. So I'm really excited about, uh, that networking. It's a great concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that then, we are going to move on to, um, consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent, consent agenda, ASD memorandum number thirty-four personnel report, September third, two thousand nineteen, regular session minutes, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, executive and regular session minutes.
Second.
Okay, board members, please vote. And that, um, consent agenda items passes unanimously with seven yeas. And before we go into our action items, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I move to approve the expulsion of students associated with ASD incident numbers twelve ninety-seven, two forty-one, twelve ninety-seven, two fifty-one, twelve ninety-seven, two forty, twelve ninety-seven, two sixty-one, and twelve ninety-seven, two eighty-six, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Board members, please vote.
I had abstain.
She's had abstain on, um... And she's, she's shared...
It's okay.
Yeah.
I just thought that was my...
And that passes with six, uh, yeas and one abstain. I just want to say that Ms. Hildy has shared with me her conflict and it's a personal nature and not one to be shared. So at this time, I will read a statement on procedures for agenda item testimony, which are as follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President and if seconded by another board member. I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicated you are interested in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time reminding, remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote, before finally calling for the official vote. The vote, voting results will be displayed on the screen to my right.
I was waiting for the public testimony. I move to approve ASD memorandum number twenty-six and authorize the superintendent to accept a continuation grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development deed in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for the second of a two-year project to support the Alaska Educational Leadership Echo Network project.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on memorandum zero-two-six? Seeing no public testimony, is there any board discussion? No board discussion. If I have the student rep vote, please.
Yes.
And board members, please vote. And that board, uh, memo passes with seven yeas unanimously.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero-three-zero and authorize the superintendent to dispose of the listed surplus property by sealed bid sale, public auction, or other means as practical.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on memorandum zero-three-zero? Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 030? No public testimony, is there any board discussion? I have a question, and I probably should have asked this a long time ago, but on some of these things that are in poor condition, I mean, we really don't state the dollar amount that we get from anything, so some of these things isn't really a sale, are we just disposing of them, or are they all being sold?
Great question, Madam President. I'm going to turn that over to our operations and our finance departments.
Good evening. All of these items will be taken to an auction, once the board approves it. We don't know at this time how much we'll get out of it, but this is the first step, the authority to take it to auction.
Okay, great. And then, if it's not sold at auction, then we just dispose of it?
That's correct. Normally, they'll take it for free at the auction. A lot of these are parted out, so we'll get rid of them at that location.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other board comments or questions, student rep vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. Okay, and that Memorandum 030 passes unanimously with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 040, and adopt the attached Association of Alaska School Boards AASB Resolutions, with the exception of Resolution 2.42, and support the renewal of the remaining resolutions that are scheduled to sunset this year.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 040? Hearing none, is there any board discussion? Okay, student rep vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that Memorandum passes with six yays and one nay. So, we move into non-action items. Are there any non-action items that board members would like to pull? Well, I'd like to pull prioritization of board requests for information. Right, yeah, okay. All right. So, at this point, we're going to move on to discussion of prioritization of board requests for information, which is our RFI. And, excuse me, and before we do that, I just want to kind of make a disclaimer. Today, I was on the, I don't want to say the Good Morning, I can't remember what it's called now, but it's Channel 11, Daybreak. And one of the questions they asked me was about the year-round school year, and for the life of me, I could not figure where this was on the agenda. But with the request for information for our board members, these are things that have come up with our board, that they've had questions about, or have wanted more information. There's a lot of things that we ask the administration for, and some of these we put out on the request for information, because then we can find out how long it will take for the administration to get back to us. We prioritize them, and so, that's where they're at. So, kind of, it's a request for information, if we need it in the future to make decisions, but it's just kind of doing our due diligence and educating the board on things that we think could be of relevance maybe later. So, just a disclaimer, this is what this is. It's not that we are voting on year-round school, or school four days a week, or anything like this. This is kind of informational for the school board at this time, and asking questions and getting information. So, yes, so if you would project. So, the first thing, and none of these have been prioritized yet, and Dr. Bishop, I don't know if you've been able to ascertain time on these as of yet, as to how we would prioritize them. Oh, there is, I didn't see it. Oh, for each one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And, Madam President, I might clarify, that we did look at these and prioritize time to do a complete report to the board, but the board might want it kind of simpler, or maybe just, one, that was discussed, is the different types of year-round school, the research around that. We can access research for the board, and then, the next one could say, could you layer that upon ASD, and how that would look for ASD? The staff requirement to layer it on top of our system to make some recommendations is the time-consuming part, or we could just, if the board wants general information about year-round school and how it works, and what's the research behind it, we belong to hand over research, and we can provide that. So, there might be different layers of it. What we did is pretty much the maximum full report, really study during a work session, you would want the information. So, that's the difference. So, that would be the maximum, and we could lower it down if it's just simpler, and we're interpreting it wrong.
So, our first one was from Alicia Hildy, and it was request for data on innovative education models and cost. And, oh, there you are, Ms. Hildy, I guess I would let you answer that question. Are you just looking at informational type stuff, or how it would layer into?
I mean, the question is, in the scope of our district planning, and the structural deficit that we've talked about, you know, what are our options besides just kind of doing what we've been doing? And certainly, some of the things we've done are wonderfully innovative and creative, but it's a large number, and is there a way that we can deliver things differently? Or, we have all these wonderful opportunities already happening in our district, what's working well? So, I don't think it's just a little overview of research. I would mean for it to be, what can we do to address our structural deficit while, you know, advancing the interests of student education?
Okay. So, in that context, then, I would assume the estimated time of 20 to 40 hours would be?
Madam President, it would be in conjunction with other items for the budget, so yes, we can get that done. We would use research out there, and then, really thoughtfully think how, what the money-saving things were, in regard to some of these. Money-saving, but yet moving education forward, so it's not just about what's least expensive, it's about what's innovative, what can help kids, and is there a difference in how we utilize our resources? So, we can do that.
Is there a, I guess we would say, is there a second for this, that the board could say, yes, this is something we want to prioritize? And I think this is more of an unofficial vote, and just kind of a, you know, straw, right? Yeah. Right, we'll slide it down into high, medium, or low priority. Well, I'll second it. And then, as far as priority, where do board members believe this should go? Have their, I have one that says medium. Ms. Mitchell?
Well, I'm kind of a little, I think this is hopefully something that the administration does, you know, informally, on a somewhat regular basis, brainstorm about these kinds of things, but it's, I mean, to really, it's a big ask. I think it is going to be critical as we go forward. I guess I would wonder, I mean, if we're, are you thinking, Ms. Hildy, about trying to get your back on this in the next two or three months, or are you thinking about it being longer term? I don't know what's feasible in terms of what else the administration has on their plate.
I recognize that this makes, that we can't do a lot of the other things, right? This is a larger ask, so that's a choice the board has to decide, because we can't ask all this time of the administration. We have our strategic planning going on, and I think it would be remiss for us not to think long-term, think where are we going, not surprising people, but incorporating it into the discussions that we're going to already be having with our community. I think this is, for me, a high priority.
I think, I think the other thing with me on some of this is not knowing what the budget's going to be. Some of this could be, I don't know about year-round, but four-day school could be a cost saver. So, I think, you know, those are things, too, that we're going to be looking at, and trying not to cut programs, but maybe look at a way to deliver school that we can cut costs without cutting what our students are receiving. But anyway, and there's no, if we put it in a category now, we can always bump it, lower it, whatever. At this point, we're just looking, where do we want to put this?
Does it maybe make sense to go through all of them first, and then we can go back and vote on them, so that we kind of are weighing them in our minds against each other?
Okay, kind of make a note of where you are with it, so, okay. So, we'll go to the next one, which is the impacts of, I need my glasses, impacts of administration cuts at 5%, 10%, and 15% levels. And basics, in order to more closely estimate the number of hours, would be possible to clarify the definition of administration, as this changes the numbers of personnel involved in the Department of the Products. Is this by state function? Is it everyone in the ed center, including staff that fall under instructional support, sped, et cetera? Doesn't include purchasing warehouse that falls under administration? Is it just exempt, or any bargaining groups exempt from the analysis? Does this include grant funding positions as well of GF positions, general fund positions? And we have a timeline to be determined. So, I think at this point, we're talking, well, we're not talking about prioritizing, so we're just going through them. If you have a question, let's talk about it. If you don't have a question, kind of make a little note of where you would put this. Mr. Donley, do you want to speak to this?
Well, this is a pretty standard budgetary function in large public bodies, to do this exercise, to identify potential reduction scenarios, and what the impact of them would be. So, to have it produced by the experts, the people who actually administration, I think is a superior method of doing it, rather, excuse me, rather than having individual board members bring forward amendments, when we don't know as much about the budget as the actual budget preparers. So, it's just a standard process that most large public entities utilize.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions, Ms. Mitchell?
Well, and I guess, Dave, what you're asking is, you're saying impacts of the cuts, so you're looking at how much would it be fiscally, but then, what would it mean in terms of how the organization can be run, and what kind of constraints that would put on the capacity of the organization, right?
Okay. We'll move on to the next one, which was by Deana Mitchell, and this is just Educator Rising Program Update. We have one hour here, I think it is a new program this year, so it would be interesting to hear, maybe in the, not necessarily, maybe right after the first year, how it's going. Give it a semester, and then get some feedback on the program, if the board is, so we could put it as a low priority. I mean, I'm just, I know we're not supposed to, but we could probably do that now, and then put a timeline of after the first year. Would that work for the administration? Okay. The next one is impact to UAA teacher education program, and Ms. Mitchell, this is from you again, would you like to speak to that?
Well, I guess that wasn't really a separate question, it was more if we, how is, I don't even know what Schools Educator Rising is in, so it was just kind of giving an overview of what, how, you know, where is it, how many students are registered? And then, when we were talking about having this program, it was, I think, part of the thought was, this, the kids who go through it will have their, just like with Project Lead the Way and some of our other programs, they'll have a couple of credits that they could start college with, but now that we don't, I just was wondering how the lack of an education program at UAA is going to impact the, you know, where the kids go, and, you know, just, it was in the context of the Educator Rising thing.
Sure, I mean, I can alleviate some of your concerns now. All the UAA, almost the majority of the UAA students that were in the UAA program had been picked up by UAF, because they had the capacity to do so. Some were picked up by UAS, but they're still taking courses at UAA. Their program is just accredited through another university, and now the university's looking at one accreditation possibly. So, I don't think locally, people can still be served, it's just, to Dave's ask, where's the administration held? And they're looking at one program instead of three.
Well, there we go, we can take the two hours off the list.
Okay.
Give them to Alicia.
Okay. All right, so the next one is the middle school model. And, Mr. Donley, that was yours?
Yeah, this was an amendment that was made in this year's budget, but not fully funded. So, the middle school model that's being utilized by the Anchorage School District, it's kind of a misnomer, I guess. It's, I don't know the real precise terminology to use, but that was the terminology that we used during the budget process. And because it wasn't fully funded, which I believe would cost between $3 and $4 million, it resulted in a necessity of increasing the class sizes in our middle schools, by, I believe, three students per class, at least the targeted class size. And I'd really like to understand the efficacy of the model, the impacts of it, both pro and con, and whether it's worth the investment of the larger class sizes to pay for the additional planning period.
And I think we have on here that this would be a good one also, after the first quarter, so we can see what the impact has been, and have time to study that a little bit. And if the board is okay with that, I think we can, you know, move that down. I don't want to say low priority, but that it has a timeline, I'm not quite sure where to move it, but the timeline would be in November.
Sure. And, Madam President, just to add to this, that we weren't thinking of these again, and just the administration stating, there actually is a middle school advisory group that they work with, so it would take time to get people together, they would prepare the reports. So, this isn't just one person saying, oh, let me report to the board. We really did our best in saying, if we were going to share the information, we would have the people doing the work share the information. So, we would elicit that middle school group that's working with Kirsten and hers to present their findings. And the data's easy, we could just get class sizes, but there's also the benefits part. So, just as a mind's eye, when someone looks at this and says, what, what would this entail? It would entail that middle school group that was charged with the reorganization, to have them get the information back, however they find out, you know, how to get it.
So, maybe, and then you'll be next, Ms. Hildy, maybe this is one that would be after the first year again, and I say that only because with the strategic planning, we're going to be using a lot of resources to go out to the community, to gather input, and so it's not that I like to put these things off, but it gives us a little more time to gather data, and I think the administration a little more time to work on it.
Sure, I mean, I can get the class sizes, the data's easy. The success would really, that's a little bit more, that's determining what is success, and what did we say we wanted to turn out to do? And we look at other student data indicators to know whether the success part, so we could do it, break it into two, and say, here's class sizes. Now, at the end of the first year, first semester, that group can come back, that's working, you know, there's a representation from each middle school, administration and teachers, they could come back and present to the board at the end of the year.
Mr. Donley, if it's okay with the rest of the board, I think we could just do this in one step, and do it after the first of the year, if that's, that way, we'd have more data to collect, and we could just do everything at once.
That timing seems fine. I think the information should be available in time for the next budget decisions.
Okay, thank you.
After the semester?
After the semester, yep. The next one is update on marijuana use and vaping, and this was by Ms. Hildy. And I know we're looking at a policy change also, correct, Mr. Holloman? A recommendation is coming forward at the next governance meeting, was my understanding?
We reviewed it at the last, and basically, it was a cleanup of language, because our existing policy allocates faculty smoking areas and things that don't really apply anymore.
I thought we were getting a recommendation of.
I can share that, in line with the language, Member Holloman's correct, the former language said e-cigarettes, and now.
and now there's a difference between e-cigarettes and vaping. So the more innovation we get in that kind of stuff, the more we have to change our policies. So, but we did want the board to know that we're able to. We did break out our logging of tobacco and e-cigarettes, because some of the vaping items don't have tobacco in them. So we needed to figure out a way to cover them in policy. We were behaving the same way and having the same consequences, but technically, if we were challenged, not all vaping has tobacco or nicotine, rather. So we have separated for the audience and students and parents to know, if smoking or tobacco or e-cigarettes or vaping or something like that happens, we will separate what it was. Prior to this time, Joe, if we asked a question, he'd have to go back and go to every single school, go through files to find out the notes, was this, what kind of smoking was this, to find out the data on individual things. So now we've separated that in the logging of it, like whether it was vaping or e-cigarettes. We did the same for drugs, and we separated out marijuana, even though marijuana is a drug. There was a question from this board several years ago when the law had changed, and it took us a while to mine the data because our systems were set up for drugs, period. It didn't determine. In the notes, it had what it was, but the click of like drop down where you could easily access data. So those two things have changed in our recording, just to FYI. But to Mr. Holloman is correct, it is all language updates.
So Ms. Hildy, you put this forward. Would that, having that data available, would that answer your question or, and the language that we're changing?
Well, we have the general marijuana uses cruised over three times. You know, those kind of things I can talk to community councils about, and we can share as we talk about our strategic planning and goals and how we address the developmental needs of our students. So I am okay if this is, I don't want to say low priority, but wait for a report on it. I don't need that report today. I have enough information to say there is a need, and I think it's compelling enough with what I have. Not, I would love to know, spend an hour talking about this, but I recognize that we have limited time.
And just a good news for the board, if it's approved. I've participated in the Heart Association in my former district, and we really support it here, the American Heart Association. And they have selected 12 superintendents from across the country, and ASD being one of them, because Alaska is so supportive of the Jump Rope for Heart and Heart Association. They are putting together a focus study group on vaping to take place in the middle of November, and they sent us a notice, and I read it, and then they called this morning and said no. And so it is timely to get representation there from ASD to learn about the national vaping crisis and what's being done around the country. But it is a sponsorship by the Heart Association because of the work that ASD schools do already for the National Heart Association. So that can come up, and perhaps after that time, we can share the more global picture and some solutions that we could build into our strategic plan.
Wonderful. Next item is training for SROs, and that was Ms. Bellamy.
Just basically, besides, just interested in knowing what, how we train the SROs, I know they're trained policemen.
Right.
But what do we do, like with SEL training or anything like that? Do we provide culturally responsive training to them? That was my question.
Is that something we could just put in Board Connect?
Okay, that would work. Yeah, that would work.
Okay, great, thank you. School-based investigations?
That's me.
Yes?
Just curious again, what, you know, what, how are we, how are, what is the training that our school, our staff and our school principals, assistant principals, besides, you know, what they get in school law, as, you know, in their training and their preparation? Just wondering, how, is there a standard training that they receive, and how is that passed on?
And I'm a little fuzzy on this. So training is provided to leadership principals, central office leadership, and how they conduct and document?
Investigations, investigations.
Into?
Into whatever happens at school.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure that they grant due process. Is it a systemic kind of training, or is it just, is everybody doing their own thing? That's my question.
I would even add to this, and if you don't mind, appeals. Because I know, it's been a couple of years ago, but when I appealed something, it was actually somebody in the same school that, and I thought it should have been somebody outside of the school doing the appeal. It didn't seem nonpartisan enough to me. But I'd be, I'd be curious too, to know what we're doing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. And it just depends on the level of the appeal. There's a different.
Exactly.
So that would be a low priority, do you think, or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not anything serious.
Right, yeah. So we'll, okay. Next one is equity.
That one's mine as well. So are the next three, actually. There should be one.
Okay.
I intended them to be one under equity.
Okay.
And actually, I am fine, after having more conversation, I think I am fine with waiting until we allow Mrs. Hunt to gather her, you know, her position, because she's just fairly new.
Right.
But in the absence of policy, I just wonder how we were, you know, how we were defining equity and how were we applying it. But we just need more time. And I'm fine to wait for that time, for that, for that time. And then the other thing, so I would, so all of those really for me, they go in, they should have been like equity question, and then bing, bing, bing underneath. So I'm fine to wait until like December.
So the next three or the next four underneath equity?
The next, it would be nine, 10, 11, and 12. Oh, wait, and then, yeah, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Those are all equity-based questions. Right?
Yeah, so it would actually be seven, eight, nine, and 10, I think.
So not, wait, hold on. So whatever, equity, understanding equity, embedding equity in our practice and process, those are the ones.
Okay.
Okay?
So it doesn't include diverse, inclusive workforce?
No, that's a separate.
Okay, okay.
That's a separate issue.
Okay, great. So now we'll move on to diverse, inclusive, and workforce.
And that was me as well.
Yes.
You can tell who the new kid is, right? Anyway, I'm just curious, in a climate of diminishing resources, what is our plan to recruit and retain a more diverse and inclusive workforce? I know that's not an easy task, but I think it's something that we need to keep on, we need to keep working at. And absence of plan and a commitment, I think things just kind of fall away. But again, I'm hoping that that's going to be part of that, our overall, and we got this wonderful opportunity with strategic planning to really do some work with equity and diversity. So I'm excited about that.
Okay. Enrollment and budget numbers.
That one's not mine.
Okay. That's Ms. Mitchell.
I was at a community council meeting the other day, and they asked me what, for the past three years, they asked me if I could give them enrollment for the past three years and our overall budget for the past three years. So that's where that came from. They wanted six numbers from me.
Couldn't we, I thought I saw that, yeah.
It was answered by email on the 26th, and it took all of six minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you by any chance copy me on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will look for it.
We actually sent it directly to you, but it's in your budget books as well.
Sorry. And thank you.
Okay, the next one is counselors in elementary schools.
And this was a question from someone in the community, and I just wanted an update on where we're at.
And I will second that, although I have some information too that I've gotten, but it's always nice because it's a big concern, I think. Okay, now let's go back up to the top and let's prioritize these, though, that you've seen everything. So alternative school schedules, innovative delivery models, I think we said, after the first of the year?
What are our choices? How are we prioritizing?
High, medium, or low?
High, medium, low.
Right. And we can put timelines beside them also.
Okay.
Yes?
I would prefer it high so that it is incorporated into this planning process we're doing.
Okay. Ah. So it's not moving here? Okay, got it. Okay. Yeah, this is better.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Okay, so that is Ms. Hildy's, and she'd like to put it as a high priority. How do other board members feel? I think given the time that it's going to take, I'd like to make it a high priority also, because I'd like to have this information when we start making budget decisions or those type of things. Mr. Donnelly? I see.
I think it's a really important item of discussion. I'm just thinking about the statutory issues revolving around it, since we have statutes that dictate where we're at now. I'm just thinking the interplay between the actual law and this. I don't think it's something we could just do on our own without getting statutory changes.
Ms., I'm going to let Ms. Vekalis go first.
I lean towards probably the medium priority. I understand why you're looking for it, but, you know, kind of like the change in when we started school, and granted, that drew out really long, but that is a big community-wide discussion, and I know we're, we can maybe ask some questions as part of the strategic planning, you know, things that we're putting out to the community, but there's no way this is going to impact next year that I can tell, because whether it's statutory or it's contracts or anything like that, I don't think it's an immediate possibility, barring some really, really, really big thing. And so I would move it more towards a medium thing with everything that I know we do have going on, you know, right now.
Ms. Hildy?
I absolutely agree with Member Vekalis that there's nothing immediately that can happen. My goal is to incorporate it planning so that we don't have to spring things on people, that we have time to fully consider, and that we can present plans for whatever we do that people have. There's no surprises. There's two, you know, if there is going to be a change, you have two years' advance notice, you know. I don't want us to get caught seeing our structural deficit, that we didn't take the time now to look at what our options really are, what's really possible, rooted in really improving education. Otherwise, we, you know, wait, and then we're just forced to do the bare minimum, how can we find this money? I don't want to be in that position.
And I think, one moment, I think the thing too to look at is it's not just year-round school, four-day school week. It's the data on innovational education models.
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay. Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, I think it's part of a bigger question that also includes the school day, the length of the school day, and the number of actual instructional days per year also. So I think it'd be appropriate to add those to the list unless it's just really a more generic idea of.
I think you could just take off those two little one and two. The idea is whatever is possible. I don't want to, I don't know that those are the answer. They were just, oh, kind of an example.
Sure.
All of those things are true that you said. I would just take off those two.
We're just going to leave it innovative educational models and cost. Okay, so that is going to move to high priority. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Next one is middle school, oh, wait a minute, impacts of administration cuts, 5%, 10%, and 15%. And I think that when we start talking in budget, what about March, February? I think we could put that on a medium, but with a timeline that we need it to make budget decisions. Dr. Bishop, is that, okay. Yes?
Don't we have to turn our budget over to the Muni by?
February.
Beginning of February?
Yeah.
So we probably would need something by January?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as we have time for budget discussion. Middle school model, I think we also said that one would be after the first of the year. Jim, did you have something?
Just to clarify, we owe our budget to the municipality by the first Monday of March.
Okay.
And it's the month of February where the board gets two readings and votes on it with modifications in order to get it to the Muni, and it's established by charter.
Thank you. All right. Middle, but put a timeline of, in time for board, budget discussion. The next one, did we go down too far? Middle school model, that is also one after the first of the year. Probably put it in the middle range and just put that timeline of after the first. Yeah. Update on marijuana use and vaping, I think we said low priority. Yeah. Training for SROs. Board Connect. Yeah. Equity piece, where it's not that it's not a high priority, but I think we, as you said, need to give time to get things going. So maybe this is another something that would be after the first of the year.
Or whenever the superintendent is ready to.
Is ready, okay. So.
And all of, can those all go together?
Yeah.
They should be all together, unless there's a reason why we.
There was a reason just in the point of the number of questions that come to, I mean, and I think that was the purpose of this, to demonstrate, I'm just going to share, it takes time. And so each one of these actually is, it's a topic, but it's a discrete, different question, and it takes different time. And whatever, we're going to do the work. It was just the, I think someone, the idea for this was to say, how many questions are given to administration, and we should look at that as a board. So that was the guidance to us, so then that's why I put them in there. And we didn't even follow through when we, like, answered some because we could, you know. And then in the Board Connect, there's answers too. So it's hard to keep track of this. It's all different ways anyway, but, but that was the guidance to us, so that's why we did that. I think that's why it was done in that section. But it is the same topic.
Yeah.
So.
So where do we put it? I'm sorry. Oh, I see. I got it.
Might I suggest too, I, in regard to how a miscommunication happened in regard to reading board docs, if you say high, medium, and low, and equity is in low, and vaping is in low, I think that's not really articulating what you, we mean. I would just, maybe in the timing of immediate response desired. Yeah. Because I don't think that this is the right communication the board desires to make.
Right, I agree.
In light of what happened today.
Yeah, thank you. So maybe we need to put this in a timeline sequence, like immediate would be, what, four weeks, a month?
Immediate, I'd say within the week, within the week, hopefully. Oh, but immediate, like high priority can't be, like.
Right.
Alternative schools can't be immediate.
So can we, can we just do these and put kind of a deadline or when it would be nice to have, or, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, so each one of these, we could say after the first of the year, or we could say, you know, February.
You could put summer, some can wait till summer.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Prior, yeah, by semester, by quarter, by semester, by year, maybe that.
Yeah.
Or other could be Board Connect, because Board Connect's kind of immediate. Board Connect is within the week. Yes, and hopefully anyone that sees that will know it's going to change, because I wouldn't say that this is what we want to communicate, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're just trying to, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. It'll save us a lot of grief in the long run. Okay, the next one was, I've lost track here where they're at.
Where are we at? Diverse workforce?
Yes. Which one is it?
Diverse and inclusive workforce.
Right.
It needs to go wherever equity goes.
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, we'll go in with the equity one.
Yeah.
Which will be. Which will be, I think, after the first of the year. Yeah. The next one is coun, is the next one counselors in elementary schools. Board Connect, would that work? Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Well, we, we have somebody that keeps us in line over there. Giving you a hard time.
I like it that everyone sees what's...
Yeah. I do, too. Okay, no problem. I think that's it, isn't it? Good job, guys. I think these are important questions, and this is a good way for us to categorize and assign, hopefully help the administration out too, so. So at this time, we are looking at new business. I do have one item. Katie, do you have those handouts? And this may be something that we need to discuss at the next board meeting and put it on non-action items. Mr. Roth, this is in regards to the resolution on capital improvement and planning. Would that work for you? Okay.
Through the president, absolutely.
And, and Madam President, a little bit of background, there was guidance from the board in regard to a resolution about our priorities for construction. And those were, while the hiatus or the moratorium was on state share of bond money, and so that was to work on not the renovation and rebuilding, it was really for the, the parts of a building, major maintenance. There have been other needs that have come up that the board has looked at, and there's a belief that perhaps a moratorium might be extended. But either way, we have since had an earthquake, and the repairs for the earthquake would need to be prioritized as well. So our work just isn't in line with prior, and we just want to be in line with what the board desires.
So what I would ask the board is to review this. Do we want to just resign this resolution? Or do we want to make changes to it? Or do we want to come up with something else that is appropriate for this time? That would be, what I'd be looking for is recommendations at our next board meeting under non-agenda items. Okay, is there any other new business by board members? All right. We are on our last public testimony. Is there anyone that would like to testify? Comments from school board members or administration? And it is, administration can make comments too, if you guys like over there. Any comments from board members? Mr. Donnelly?
As, I forget which entity was working on trying to address the issue of our meetings being held the same night as the assembly, and trying to shift so that we're not on the same night as the assembly, encourage assembly?
We did get a message, there's only two nights that we're in conflict of, and both of those nights are not anything on the agenda that would affect one or the other. So I think...
It's two meetings after the first of the year.
Yeah, after the first of the year. Yeah, yeah. So I think we're okay unless board members still have a concern, but there's only two meetings for the rest of the, yeah, yeah, when they set them in January.
If we aren't going to be in conflict with the assembly, are we still, are going to be, are we going to be able to restore access to Channel 9?
That I don't know. I think we've, yeah, we can look into that. I know we've had that discussion, so we will...
We'll come back with it.
Yeah, we'll come back with an answer to that. Any other comments or administration? Anything good over there?
Tell us that it's required.
The what?
So you can tell someone it's required.
All right, fine. Yes.
I just wanted to comment that it's been really fun to get into the schools that are my new responsibility for this year and get to know them a little bit. And several of my elementary schools are in the pilot program for the ASD 60, the 60 minutes of combined lunch and recess, and it sounds like overall is going pretty well. The lunch part, I think, in a couple of schools feels a little bit long when kids finish eating and they still, so they're figuring that piece out, but it's, it's been really fun to see how the different schools are working it, and they're enjoying it, so.
I think a lot of my schools are still doing the 45 minutes, so they, but they are actually sitting down, and they have a full 20 minutes to eat, and that seems to be, I look around the room, and it seems to be sufficient. So it'll be very interesting to see how we move forward with this. But if there's no other comments, and I think this might be a record for us, we're gonna, do I have a motion to adjourn? You have a second? We, yeah, we are adjourned at 7:40 PM. I know.